Notice is hereby given at the regular meeting of the Board of Education of the town of Westfield in the county of Union, New Jersey at 6:00 PM on the evening of Tuesday, November 18th, 2025, in Cafeteria B of Westfield High School, 550 Dorian Road, Westfield, New Jersey. The Board will move immediately into private session to discuss matters rendered confidential by state and federal law, including student matters and contract negotiations. The public portion of the meeting will resume at 7:00 PM. The purpose of the meeting is to transact the regular business of the Board and to transact any other business to come properly before the Board. This is to advise the general public and to instruct that it be recorded in the minutes that in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 entitled the Open Public Meetings Act, the Westfield School Board on Thursday, November 13th, 2025, caused to be posted at the Office of the Board of Education located at 302 Elm Street, Westfield, New Jersey, and delivered to the Westfield Leader, NJ.com, the Westfield Library, Town Clerk of Westfield, TapInToWestfield, and Patch.com, a meeting notice setting forth the time, date, and location of this meeting. Patty may have a roll call, please.
Rob Benaccia.
Here.
Kent Diamond.
Here.
Brendan Galligan. Charles Jalinas. Leila Morelli.
Here.
Sonal Patel.
Here.
Kristin Sonic-Schmelz. Julie Steinberg.
Here.
Mary Wickens.
Here.
Mary, would you leave this in the flex, please? I move the Board to approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education move into private session for the purpose of discussing matters rendered confidential by state and federal law, including student matters and contract negotiations, and be it further resolved that any discussion held by the Board which need not remain confidential and the results of the discussion will be made public as soon as practicable. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Kent? We can do what's good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? We are in executive session. All right, the Board's going to come back to order from executive session. We are going to start with our Board announcements. I don't know if who was number one, so. Mary, you want to start us off on the announcements, please?
Yes, I would. Okay, good evening, everyone. On Thursday, November 13th, the Franklin Elementary PTO, Principal Duncan, and members of the Westfield community gather for a ribbon-cutting ceremony to celebrate Project Playground, the school's newly expanded and more inclusive playground. The upgraded playground reflects Franklin Elementary's commitment to inclusive play, community engagement, and creating spaces where every student can learn, play, and grow together.
Excellent. Kent?
Thank you. Twenty-five Westfield High School student athletes were recognized this month for signing national letters of intent to continue their academic and athletic careers at colleges and universities across the country. The event celebrated the dedication, hard work, and achievements of these outstanding Blue Devils who have itself both in the classroom and in competition. Coaches, teammates, administrators, and families joined in congratulating the students on reaching this exciting milestone. Congratulations.
Brendan?
Yep. Twice a year, the Westfield High School Counseling Department presents the Derek Nelson Lift While You Climb Award to honor students who embody the values of former Westfield High School Principal Dr. Derek Nelson, who believed in helping others as we rise. This fall, 11 students were recognized for their kindness, integrity, and commitment to making a positive impact within the Westfield High School community.
So? Yep.
The Westfield High School Wind Ensemble has been invited to perform at the 2026 New Jersey Music Educators Association State Conference this February at the Atlantic City Convention Center, one of the highest honors for a school music program in the state. This selection highlights the excellence of our students and marks the first time since 2017 that Westfield has received this distinction. A special thank you goes to the class of 2025 whose audition recording earned this prestigious invitation.
Kristin?
Westfield Public School District will be closed on Thursday, November 27th, and Friday, November 28th, in observance of Thanksgiving. We wish all students, staff, and family a safe and joyful holiday filled with gratitude, rest, and time with loved ones.
Leila, I think you have one?
Throughout November, Westfield High School Unified Sports is hosting basketball clinics emphasizing inclusion, student leadership, and teamwork. Students develop skills through drills and scrimmages while reflecting on encouragement and positivity. Activities like the encouragement relay and structured roles ensure every participant is supported, fostering belonging, confidence, and meaningful peer connections.
Julie?
The next Parent Teacher Council General Meeting will take place tomorrow, Wednesday, November 19th, at 10:30 AM. The PTC serves as the umbrella organization for all 10 Westfield School PTOs. Monthly meetings bring together PTO President, the PTC Board, District Administration, and the Board of Education Representative Kristin Sonic-Schmelz to discuss district-wide initiatives and updates. For more information, please visit the PTO Parent Teacher Council tab on the district website.
And I'll finally announce the next regular public meeting of the Board of Education will be on Tuesday, December 16th, in Cafeteria B at Westfield High School, beginning at 6:30 PM, where we will recognize our fall athletic season accomplishments and hear some sounds of the season performed by the WHS String Quartet. The meeting will be livestreamed via the district YouTube channel, which viewers can access on the Board tab on the district website. With that, we have one more announcement to make. We have with us representatives from the NJASA, Dr. Rich Boza, the Executive Director, and Dr. Judy Ratner, the Assistant Executive Director, who have a presentation for a certain superintendent who we may know, so I'll invite them up to the podium to do that.
Thank you very much for your invitation, President Benaccia, members of the Board of Ed, distinguished guests, and members of the community. I'm Rich Boza, Executive Director of NJASA, and as you mentioned, with me is Judith Ratner, our Associate Executive Director. It's my privilege to join you this evening to formally recognize Ray, who has been selected as the 2026 New Jersey Superintendent of the Year. This prestigious honor places him among the nation's leading educational executives and affirms the high regard in which he is held by his colleagues across New Jersey. Since assuming the superintendency of the Westfield Schools in 2021, Ray has demonstrated thoughtful leadership, strategic focus, and an unwavering commitment to advancing student learning and well-being. He has earned the respect of his peers through his professionalism, integrity, and strong advocacy for public education. While NJASA recognizes a number of significant accomplishments during his tenure, including major advancements in fiscal stewardship, strategic planning, academic leadership and governance, the purpose of this recognition extends beyond his individual achievements. Dr. Gonzalez stands as a representative of the exemplary leadership demonstrated by New Jersey Superintendent statewide. His selection highlights the collective dedication, resilience, and innovation that define our state's educational leaders. On behalf of the New Jersey Association of School Administrators, I extend our sincere congratulations to Dr. Gonzalez. We are proud to have him serve as New Jersey's representative in the National Superintendent of the Year program and confident that he will reflect the strength and professionalism of all his New Jersey colleagues on the national stage. Ray, would you join us to receive your plaque? Congratulations, my friend.
Can I picture you? Someone come in the center.
I didn't get the gray memo, I'm sorry.
And can we get one on the board?
Sure, absolutely.
So, congratulations, and we are going to celebrate by putting you right to work with a report by District Administration.
So, just to get started, I do want to thank everyone. What was not captured in the comments that was made was the fact that we were also presented this evening by the leaders of our Professional Association for Superintendents in this state of New Jersey, who are also former Union County Superintendents. Both were superintendents in Berkeley Heights. And Dr. Ratner, Judy Ratner, was the 2016 Superintendent of the Year for the state of New Jersey. So, the tradition of excellence that is found in this county, let alone in this community, runs deep, and I'm certainly proud to be a part of it. I did share during the New Jersey School Boards Association's regional recognition comments that really spoke to something that I'd just like to share this evening with everyone, which is that, as we all know, the work can't be done in isolation. It can't be done by a single individual. And certainly over my career in multiple districts, working with multiple communities, multiple Boards of Education, the one theme that was woven through all the experiences was the importance of trust. You know, and recognizing how important trust is to getting work done, we often find it's easy to recognize when trust is absent, because that's when we see things starting to go awry. That's when there's confusion, that's when there's conflict even. But when there is trust in a school district, the trust between members of the community and the Board of Education, between the administration and the school staff, between teachers and students, when you see that trust happen, then that's really when exciting things can occur for students. And most notably, in the world of Westfield Public Schools, that was represented in the trust that we have seen over the past several years between the community and the school district in the approval of our budgets over the past several years, and most recently in the approval of the bond referendum. And I just don't want that to be overlooked as part of the work of a school district, part of the work of a Board of Education, and part of the work of a superintendent, is to always maintain that level of trust between the work that we do and certainly the commitment of this school district to support and serve our students. I would be remiss if I didn't use the opportunity this evening to thank everyone around the table for trusting me, for believing in me, for supporting in me. But equally important is for trusting, believing, and supporting the school district and the mission of this school district, as exemplified in the work that we do each and every time we come together at a Board meeting. I also want to thank all members of the staff who are present here this evening and those who are working tirelessly, day in and day out. My executive assistant, Carla Wolf, is here. She's amazing, she's awesome, she keeps me in check, as well as members of my cabinet, Mike Weissman, Dave Greer, Kat Ernst, Patty Ramos, and certainly Matt Bolton. The members of our administrative leadership team, the members of our office staff, the members of our teaching staff and support staff, all contribute to the success of our school district, and I could not be a Superintendent of the Year without having a District of the Year behind me and supporting me. So, with that, I just want to, once again, thank everyone for their support. I want to thank everyone for the congratulations, and I look forward to representing the school district and the community with pride and honor moving forward. In addition, I do want to highlight just a couple of things. On the agenda for this evening, we do have the approval of the NJ New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum Self-Evaluation. That is also known as NJQSAC, which is our state monitoring accountability system that evaluates all school districts on five different areas: Instruction and Program, Fiscal Management, Governance, Operations, and Personnel. As part of the self-evaluation, we, as District Administrators, work together to do a comprehensive review of all of our policies, practices, and performance indicators in order to make sure that we are in compliance with the requirements under each of those five areas. The submission that you see on the agenda this evening represents months of work and collaboration in order to provide our self-assessment. And I do want to clarify for anyone who's looking closely, there is a maximum of 100 points or 100% that you can gain in any single district performance review. In the realm of Instruction and Program, the first 60% or 60 points is awarded by the state. So when we do our self-evaluation, we can include those 60 points, so that's the reason why you see the maximum amount that we were able to evaluate ourselves on, which is 40 points. So it may look lower than the rest, but it still represents the maximum allowable self-evaluation rating that we could give ourselves. Once the Department of Education receives our submission, they will then schedule an onsite visit that is conducted by the County Office of the Department of Education, who will verify all the documentation, the practices, and the scores that we provided, and they too will provide their final results for those additional 60 points that I had mentioned earlier. Once we get a final report from the Department of Education, we will then re-present those scores to the Board of Education for review and approval, and then that will then determine our next steps. Most importantly, I think, for members of the public and members of the Board of Education, is this represents an ongoing cycle of monitoring that all districts in the state of New Jersey undergo, so it certainly provides us with the confidence and reassurance of the practices that we have in place are, in fact, compliant with what the state requires. In addition to that, I also want to highlight in the Governance section that we are actually adopting a resolution this month to reinforce our commitment to protect the health and safety of our students, staff, and community by reducing vehicle idling on school property. And in doing so, we are recognizing that there are harmful effects of vehicle idling and its impact on pollutants in the air that contribute to not just poor air quality, but potential cardiovascular or respiratory challenges as well. So, in this work, we want to do what we can to provide a healthy environment for our students. We want to reduce greenhouse gases, and we want to ensure that we're creating experiences that are healthy, not only for our school district, but for our community at large. So, a few years back, as a school district, we awarded Bronze Recognition for our sustainable efforts under the New Jersey Sustainable Schools Program, and this is yet another proactive step that we're taking to support environmental stewardship and creating healthy, clean environments for our students and for generations to come. Now, last but not least, I am excited to share that the latest update on our progress to bring our referendum projects from vision to reality will occur this evening through a presentation by Mike Behring and his team from FKA Architects. I'll allow him to do the full introductions, as they will provide a status update on where we are with our referendum projects and where we are headed. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mike Behring and team.
Is this on?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. We're excited to be here today. This is our team from FKA. Lou Scheidler, Will Tate, Kristy Dougherty, I'm Mike Behring. So tonight, we wanted to walk you through what we've been diligently working on for the past few months and give you a bit of a status update on that, some timelines on how our projects are looking as they're building out. We'll review each of the schematic designs for each of the schools as they are right now, and then at the very end, we'll have a few items for what our next steps will be moving forward. So, what's been happening in these last few months? From the architectural side, we spent a lot of time field-measuring all of your buildings where we're renovating and adding on, so that we know in detail what the existing conditions look like dimensionally and physically, so we can incorporate those in our documents and designs moving forward. We've had many, many programming meetings with the administration, the principals, and department supervisors to determine the size of the new spaces and renovated spaces, the occupancy of them, what needs to be next to them, what kind of equipment needs to go on them, what are the physical features of those spaces, so that we have a good idea of how to build out our renovated and new spaces. We have also prepared a code review analysis of all of the projects to make sure that everything we're proposing is in compliance and planned properly. We've developed egress plans to the same end, and we've prepared the schematic design plans, which we're going to show you in a few minutes. We've also, some work that you won't see tonight, but which is in progress, is we're working on preliminary elevations and sections of the additions, so that we can see what they look like as they coordinate with the existing buildings and surrounding neighborhoods. And we'll be developing bid packages for summer of '26 projects and also building out project schedule. In addition to the architectural side of things, we also have the engineering side and construction manager on board. So together and collectively, we're the design team. So, from the engineering side of things, they've been out to survey mechanical electrical plumbing systems. They've analyzed the existing electric service capacity of all of the buildings to plan for not only the additions, but the air conditioning throughout, and also a conservative estimate for future expansion needs as we're upgrading electric throughout. So, all of the buildings that we're working on do, in fact, need an electric service upgrade. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that later. They've done preliminary heating and cooling load calculations to determine those sizes and start to begin the preliminary mechanical designs. We've developed an early bid package that we're working on right now to get the electric service projects out to bid. They're also working on an RFP for Building Management System. That would be your temperature controls, the head end that controls all the mechanical units throughout the building. And they have also performed acoustical baseline surveys, so that we know whatever we're going to design is acoustically accurate with the existing conditions. So, team-wide, we've been through all of the old drawings that we found in the basement at Elm Street to look and see how things were designed, how the existing structural systems of the buildings go, so we have a really good idea of how we need to plan our new designs. There's been a geotechnical investigation performed, soil borings, that is, at each of the sites to determine what the soil-bearing capacities would be for our new designs. So that was completed, and site surveys were also performed at the schools that are getting additions. And the construction managers began a construction logistics review of the plans to plan for where are things going to go on site, where is the trailer going to go, how are we going to stage the construction over the course of a couple of years? So, those are all in progress. So, timeline. This is sort of an overall boiled-down view of the schedule. So what's driving the main schedule is the additions for full-day kindergarten. So, what you see in the green bar up there represents the full-day kindergarten projects, which include Franklin, Jefferson, McKinley, Tamakwus, Wilson, and Washington. And those are scheduled to be complete in '28. So the rest of the projects that are contained within the referendum are built in the schedule around that. So the high school will follow a similar schedule to the full-day kindergarten, but we do have some projects that are going to happen earlier. So, we have a list of summer projects that will happen in 2026, and you can see the list there. Essentially, it includes playgrounds at Franklin, some restrooms at Jefferson, Tamakwus, and the high school, playgrounds at Washington, and some site work at Washington, and the media centers at Edison and Roosevelt. So, in addition, I mentioned the electric service replacement. So one of the things that the team is doing is we're issuing an early bid package to get the electric service replaced in the schools. The reason being is twofold. One is because utility companies are notoriously, have long lead times on providing transformers and things like that. The other is the main panel for the schools, we've seen lead times as much as 18 months on those. So collectively, as a team, we thought that that set of projects should be bid out first, so that that is all in motion by the time we need the buildings energized for the addition The mechanical replacement work will go in the same kind of schedule as the additions at the elementary and high schools. And then, in the summer of 2027, Edison and Roosevelt renovations would be included there for the locker rooms and the small group instruction space. And then finally, towards the end of the schedule, would be the auditorium and media center at Westfield High School. It's important to note, too, like, these aren't all, in the case of the intermediate in high schools, the summer, what's shown as like a summer project there is not necessarily just a summer. These projects are large enough that they're going to have to overlap a couple of months of the school year just because of the size and scope of the project. I'll also say that the schedule is titled Timeline 1.0. As things move forward, sometimes things change and shuffle a bit, so this is a draft schedule. Okay, so now for the plans. So, each of us will take you through our schools, one by one.
All right, so we'll start with Franklin. I'll go through the site, work our way around to the back of the building, then we'll get into what the addition is and what's included within it. So, if you start, we'll start on Newton Place side. Currently, you have an existing drive loop that's somewhat thin, runs tight to the side of the building, so with this new scheme, we're pulling off from the face of the building, including a new drive loop significantly wider for better traffic of pickup and drop-off. And what that does is also gives opportunity to put a pedestrian-specific pathway around that loop to connect from both ends of that street up to the two entry points of your school. Then you move your way to Prospect Street side, where your main office is, the main entry. What's going on there is a little addition of a new permanent entry portico, new set of doors to the main entry, as well as an ADA accessible ramp, and new stairs to give full accessibility to. to give full accessibility to the main entry of the school. Then you work your way around to the back of the school. The little gray mass that you see in between the field and the school is a combination of stairs and another accessibility ramp to allow for students to easily access, access the fields and playground area from the centralized point of the school, and also where the gymnasium is located for recess. And then, we are all aware that this new addition is taking up the space of your current playground area. So what we're doing is the lighter blue shaded areas up by the existing playground space is essentially a one-for-one, new addition of playground space surfacing, so the kids aren't losing out on that central space for outside play. So this is the overall first floor plan. Dark blue is the massing of the new addition, and the lighter blue shaded areas are renovated areas that will just help to connect the existing to the, to the new, and also provide for better programmatic spaces that are needed. And I'll explain those a little further on the next slides. This is just your second floor plan overall. Again, dark blue is the addition, lighter blue along that connecting point is your renovated existing spaces. On, back to the first floor, this is a blow-up of your, the new addition going on to Franklin. So adjacent to your existing gymnasium, you'll have an expanded area for gymnasium, and this then opens up into your new corridor, which has new kindergarten classrooms. You'll have four new kindergarten classrooms in the addition, a new set of boys' and girls' restrooms, as well as a renovated kindergarten space and guidance suite right at that connecting point between the new and existing. And on the second floor, in the new, you'll have a corridor that looks onto the open area of your gymnasium, and within this, you're getting some new small group instruction spaces, new typical-sized classrooms. And then, in the renovated areas, you're getting another renovated classroom and some additional small group instruction spaces.
Sorry, I skipped one. Okay, next up, we will talk about Jefferson. Jefferson will receive an addition to, on the north side of the building as well as the south side of the building, we will be adding a multipurpose room for the expansion of the school. This particular school, besides adding full-day K, is also anticipated increase in enrollment. So the additional classrooms that you'll see added are taking that into consideration. We also have areas for renovations, which include the administration space, the classrooms that were larger in square footage that we are renovating for kindergarten use, and then the area that we are tying into the building as well, we are removing a classroom and offering program space in there as well. Okay, so the scope includes the new multipurpose room, which I mentioned, five new classrooms, one of which is an art classroom for anticipated growth. We have four new SGI rooms, which is small group instruction. We're doing a CST suite. We are renovating and reconfiguring the main office as well as the nurse suite. And then, we have the five classrooms that will be renovated to accommodate kindergarten. Sorry. Okay, so the multipurpose room addition, that space is going to accommodate an elementary gym layout. We're also including storage and a PE office. The classroom wing addition is offering 10 classrooms, one and an art room. We have four small group instructions for pull-out replacement for special education, and then we have the CST suite, as well as restrooms to accommodate that, the new addition. As for the renovation of the main office area, currently, there is a conference room, an underutilized conference room that faces the main entry and entrance of the school. So that area will be opened up and reconfigured in order to provide a direct visual connection to the main entrance from the front desk. It'll provide a conference room, a office for the assistant principal, the principal, and also a nurse suite. And then, the five classrooms that are existing currently, that will be renovated to accommodate kindergarten, they were of larger square footage. Each of those classrooms will receive an accessible, single-use bathroom, and then the entryways into all of the classrooms will be widened in order to accommodate an accessible entrance. Okay, next up is McKinley. McKinley is a three-story addition, and the interesting and unique thing about a renovation with this project is the ways that we were able to utilize some conditions that were not ideal in the existing school. So currently, the main office and principal's office are broken up. They're located on the first floor, which is half-story above the entrance. So from a security standpoint, there were some issues and concerns with that. So by adding on to the new addition, we are able to address those issues as well as add the full-day K. So on the ground floor, we will be adding a new main entrance, which will be at grade with a direct connection to the main office and the nurses' suite. There will be a guidance office and a nurse suite current as well, an LLD kindergarten classroom, as well as renovating the art and music room on the ground floor. On the first floor, we're adding a CST suite, three new kindergarten classrooms, and an SGI room, small group instruction room as well, as well as renovating bathrooms in order for us to make the connection between the existing building as well as the new addition. On the second floor, we will be adding a small group instruction, as well as three classrooms, which when we look at them a little bit closer, are being taken, relocated from some of the areas that we're renovating and creating different program. So looking at the ground floor a little bit closer, we are renovating two of the classrooms on the ground floor, which are currently used as classrooms, to designated art and music rooms. In the addition, we are offering an administrative front office that includes a conference room, a principal's office, and also guidance. The nurses' suite will offer an exam room and also an accessible bathroom. And then, we also have an LLD kindergarten room, as well as a small group instruction room. Also shown in this plan is the bathrooms that are currently existing and the newer of the wing. In order to provide the connection between the existing building and the new building, they will be reconfigured and renovated in order to provide that new corridor between the two. Now, the first floor, we'll be renovating the CST suite. That was existing, was the main office as well as the nurse suite, and a small group instruction classroom, which is the existing conference room and principal's office. We will also be adding three kindergarten classrooms, a small group instruction, which is in the new addition. We will be renovating and reconfiguring the bathrooms in order to provide that corridor that we saw on the ground floor. And then, on the second floor, we will be doing the same renovations for those bathrooms, these groups of bathrooms, in order to provide the corridor to the new addition. We will also be adding three new classrooms. Those classrooms are the relocated classrooms from the art and music on the ground floor, as well as where we're creating that nurse suite. That was an existing classroom that will be relocated as well. Also, a new small group instruction, and that I mentioned, the reconfiguring of the bathrooms. That is McKinley. There you go.
Thank you. Next up, we'll be talking about Tamakwus Elementary School. What you see here on your screen is the site plan, which shows you the existing structure with our mass in blue for the addition. The challenge here was to integrate the new structure with the topography and the programming of the existing building in a way that kind of marries the two structures together in an interesting way. We'll get into more detail as we move further along. You'll notice here that the building is slightly tilted. We did that to open up the site between, for a usable space in the future. Additionally, we thought that we needed to bring in some sunlight into the existing classrooms facing towards the Baltimore Avenue side. Here's an enlarged plan showing the overall connection between the existing building and the addition, and I'll give you more insight in the next slide here. So we are adding in four kindergarten classrooms, one LLD kindergarten classroom, and then we have two SGI spaces that are at the hinge point, and we clustered the music and art classrooms towards the end, which were the more public, louder spaces away from the kindergarten classroom. And one thing to point here is this entire mass is slightly lower than the existing level of the existing school. And we did that for several reasons. We wanted to create a universal transition from the upper level of the existing school down to the exterior, where the children would play at the playground. So we're working through different strategies to make this as universal as possible for the students here. Okay, and then Washington?
All right, so for Washington, there's a lot of exciting moments to unpack here. I just want to build upon, before I get into this, what Ray alluded to earlier, is you as a board have really done a really good job in providing us feedback from the community on needs and wants. And I think you'll see that we hopefully addressed all of that within this specific design and layout and site. So similarly to Franklin, the addition is going to encompass the existing playground space. Based on a lot of many iterations, planning discussions, this is the most economical plan and layout that we were able to come up with that makes sense for just the flow, overall flow of the school and the way the program is going to be set up. So how do we address that in terms of a site? So what we've done is we've thoughtfully laid out a site design that gives you some interesting pathways that connects the new addition in the dark blue at the end, all the way around at all three main entry points, and helps to draw students and parents to, back around to the rear of the school where there's a more grander entrance that opens up into this new playground area that will provide more space for the students to play and have recess. And another benefit of this is not only are the students getting a new playground area and the site kind of connects all the way around the school, it offsets the playground from the street a little more to give a little more seclusion to that area for students when they're in session, playing outside. So this is a overall floor plan of this proposed design. The dark blue shaded areas are the addition. You have your main addition, the little blue area in the middle, that's a smaller addition for a music room, and then the light blue, just like all the other plans, are renovated areas. So you'll, that middle addition piece is the music room. So originally, that was incorporated within the main block or massing of your addition, but talking through the design and the layout and how this school and spaces are going to be used, this makes sense to put the music in that central piece, separated from classroom spaces right across from the gymnasium. So if there's concerts or anything, you have that direct connection between the two as well. And the light blue shaded areas are renovated kindergarten classrooms, as well as renovated ADA accessible bathrooms within. On the one end of the school, you have a couple more renovated spaces that are small group instruction rooms. And in your addition, you are getting four new kindergarten, or sorry, four new classrooms, which includes art. You're also getting eight additional small group instruction spaces, mixed all throughout that, and six special ed classrooms in total, as well as a new set of restrooms.
So we're looking at Wilson Elementary School here. The extent of the project here, what you see here is an interior renovation of six classrooms, with one flexible classroom for two small group instructions. And then, at the top of the screen, you'll see that we are adding a divider to an existing classroom for small group instruction. This is the first floor. On the second floor, we're adding in a divider to an existing room, renovating for two special education classrooms, and we'll show you a little bit more as we move further. Here are the classrooms on the first floor that we're renovating, with the two classrooms that are flexible with the divider in your upper left-hand corner. And then, you can see the room, the classroom with the divider on the bottom right. And then, here is a plan of the second floor showing the two special education classrooms. All right, so here at Edison Intermediate School, what you can see is the overall plan of the first floor showing the sections where we'll be adding the renovations. We are adding two locker rooms to one side with the PE office and a new ADA accessible bathroom for the PE teachers. And then, on the bottom, we're adding an SGI and an autism classroom. And then, on the second floor, which is a work in progress, you can see the location for a renovated guidance suite, as well as a learning commons or media center. So here's an enlarged plan showing you the locker room configuration that we are proposing alongside the PE office with the bathroom that was previously mentioned, as well as the SGI space and the autism, which was on the lower half below the gym. And here is a schematic, which is in progress. We've been working diligently with the team, the district, Ray, Patty, and we're working through all the nuances to get this right. That's Edison. Similarly, at Roosevelt, we're doing a similar proposal with the gym and the flanking locker rooms. The flanking locker rooms would also have the PE suite with the bathroom. And then, on the left-hand side, we are introducing three SGI classrooms and a classroom at the top. We have a new corridor with an egress exit as well. And at the lower portion of the plan, you'll see we have a renovated media center or learning commons, which is also in progress. Here's just an enlarged plan, kind of giving you a furniture layout for where we are with the current plan. the current plan. And then here's our work in progress, learning commons. All right.
Okay, Westfield High School. So this is an abbreviated site plan of the high school. And part of the scope at the high school does include a drop-off or a loop there on Dorian Road. And you can see also the addition in dark blue in the front. And part of the site work will be, as we construct this loop here, will also be to connect it to the three main entrances on this side of the building and provide accessibility to those three entrances, that being the main entrance, the auditorium, and then a new gym entrance, which would be a part of the addition. So this is an overall floor plan, which shows the areas that are being worked in. Obviously, the addition in the front facing Dorian Road there, the two locker rooms flanking the gym, the current woodshop area in the center of the building. And what's not shaded on here is the auditorium. We have not started the schematics for the auditorium or the media center projects yet, but those are to come. And then the second floor, the work on the second floor would be in the area of the current boys locker room, which has two floors. This is the second floor area of that. So a bit larger of view here, this is the addition and what's currently the boys locker room at Westfield High School. So what this does is it adds on in front of what's now the sort of gym lobby entrance there, creates a new lobby entrance in front of that one, which will include a stair to get up to the second floor area. So on this first floor here, we have two classrooms in the new addition, and we have a foods lab and the woodshop. The foods lab is a little departure from the original design here. As we've talked through how to plan this out, what we've done is moved the special education components that we originally had in the addition back into the center of the building, which I'll show you on another slide, where the current foods lab is. So we kind of swapped the spaces to what made more sense in where to keep special So this plan, that's the dark blue areas. The lighter blue areas includes renovation of the boys locker room to become a boys locker room and a boys team room, and then in between that, a shared coaches' space. And then there's space on the end of this, towards the right of the plan, which is the athletic trainers' room. So currently, that's upstairs on the second floor, adjacent to the boys' current locker room, in a sort of weird space above the stair that's in that portion of the building. So we're trying to fix that odd configuration of spaces as we get up to the second floor So this is the girl's side of the locker rooms. In this locker room, in this side of the locker room renovations, we have the PE lockers, the team lockers, and the coaches', shared coaches', I'm sorry, PE room in between. And then surrounding that, we have additional storage space. So moving to the center of the building, the current woodshop right now, you can see here, this is being renovated into special education rooms, small group spaces, and then also expanding the support services offices that are next to that, into that space to provide continuation of that office area. Now below this and not shaded is the current foods lab. That was not, the renovation of that was not a part of the referendum, but the idea is to convert that in a future project into what would become a life skills type room. This is the second floor in the area of the addition. So the only piece of the addition that would wind up being a two-story piece would be the stair and above the lobby area. And the reason for that is because the stair that currently connects the odd configuration of where the trainer space and the current boys locker room is, would be removed and reconfigured so that everything in that area becomes accessible to the current second floor, the current main second floor of the high school. So all this would then become one level, all interconnected. And then the space which currently contains the second floor of the boys locker room will be renovated into two small group instructional spaces with supporting offices. So that's an overview of the schematics for the plans and what's changed. Looking forward, our next milestone is to get the electric service projects out to bid this winter. Right after that, we're looking to send out to bid the summer of 2026 projects that I mentioned in the beginning. And then as that's going on, we're concurrently working on what we call the design development phase of the additions and renovations project. And what that means is that's when we put together all the components of the design, including material selections, what the outsides look like, renderings, and things that advance the look and feel of the building. So once that phase is done, we move into securing some agency approvals. One is Department of Education. Although we got an approval from Department of Education before the referendum, it's required that we submit any educational space back to the department so that they can see the changes and things that we've made, some of which we've talked about, like the foods lab moving into the addition. This is why they do a two-part application. So we'll be looking to do that in the winter and spring months. And then as we're doing that, we'll look to attend a courtesy planning board review and begin the local permitting process and review. As that's going on also, we'll be working on what we call construction documents. And what construction documents are, is the final drawings that we'd use for bid. This winds up being a series of drawings, which will include architectural, structural, civil, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire protection, all of these drawings, which will be a pretty hefty set of drawings that would be then issued for bid purposes and for the construction permit. In conjunction with that, we'd have a project manual, which would include technical specifications and contracts for the entire scope of work, so that then we could bid the projects in the summer and fall of '26. So that anticipates a fall and winter start of construction of '26, with the eye on completing So that is our presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have. Yes?
I perceive several parents have asked about the additions that are being put on, how we're managing that in terms of, they want to know, will they be constructed as standalones and then the connection to the existing building happen when students are out of the building?
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yes. Yeah, I know what you're asking. You're asking during construction, what's going to happen on the other side of the wall?
Right. They want to know when that transition happens and if the students are going to be exposed to that.
They won't be exposed to that. What will happen, we've had conversations with this. In the first slide, I mentioned logistics planning. This is part of logistics planning. So right now, the current plan for most of the schools is to do that connection in the last summer of the project, which would be the summer of 2028. So like if you imagine, like Franklin, we're going through a classroom to get to the addition. So that renovation of that classroom would happen in the summer of 2028. So that's like a last thing that would happen. McKinley is a little different story with a little more complicated transition, but generally, that's how it would go.
Seeing no other questions, I want to thank you guys for all the work that's been done. When we say this has been a process, this has absolutely been a process. And we are, I don't know about midway, but we're certainly a good of the way through it. So I want to thank you for all the work, for taking, you know, what's special about our district into consideration in crafting these plans, and we certainly look forward to the next round of iteration. So thank you all very, very much for coming out.
Thank you, and thank you all.
All right, next item on the agenda is a report from our high school student representative, Ben.
It's officially the start of the second marking period at WHS. As such, there are many exciting new updates to share. The pig-out activity period took place on October 24th. Dedicated to breast cancer awareness, it was a day filled with spirit and compassion. Proceeded by the choir and cheerleaders, staff and students played a volleyball game in which staff took home the win. Students also wrote letters to patients undergoing breast cancer, and doors all around the school were decorated. In the end, SGA and community service made a $500 donation of pathways, an organization supporting patients undergoing breast cancer treatment and their families. Several students also received prizes by winning a raffle sponsored by the SGA and various local businesses for being spirited during Spirit Week. Finally, SGA held a successful homecoming dance that night in which 400 students participated. On November 2nd, the three teams of the robotics club opened their season at a meet hosted in WHS's gymnasium. Team 5968 took first place out of 21 total teams. Last week, 25 WHS students gathered with family, coaches, teammates, and administrators to sign national letters of intent to pursue their athletic careers, along with higher education at schools all across the country. WHS is proud of these students who carry forward not only our tradition of academic excellence, but also of academic achievement, athletic achievement. Speaking of achievement, as already mentioned, the Dr. Derek Nelson Lifeway climb award was given last Friday to 11 students. They were nominated by their teachers for their dedication to helping others, exempt from inequalities expressed by the former WHS principal. In Dr. Nelson's own words, "You lift as you climb. If you can do that, you have contributed more to society than anything your bank account can produce, and ultimately contribute more to your own well-being." On Sunday, WHS's Running for Cancer Club held a successful 5K at Tamakwess Park, where community and students alike ran to help raise funds that will go towards helping support kids with cancer. This Monday, No Place for Hate held their annual pledge signing activity, period. Students reviewed the No Place for Hate pledge, participated in group discussions, and did an activity that helped emphasize everyone's shared interests. Overall, No Place for Hate's efforts make WHS a more inclusive, equitable, and united school. Today, Mrs. Zefendez held the first meeting with her student leadership council, composed of 10 students, two members from each class council, plus two members from SGA. Committee members discussed student opinions on the new block scheduling and Genesis blackout. Overall, Mrs. Zefendez was very receptive to feedback and is looking forward to further collaboration with the council and, as always, with the SGA to make student-informed decisions that help make WHS a better place. Looking forward, this week marks the start of the season for many winter sports teams. And finally, the theater department's fall/winter production of Blue Stockings will take place this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Make sure to buy tickets and pack the auditorium. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Moving on to the board committee reports, we'll start with curriculum instruction and programs. That's Leila.
Thank you. So the SIP committee met on Monday, November 10th. Dr. Weissman served as our facilitator for this meeting. Thank you again for doing that. And we were lucky enough to have the infamous Mr. Patterson, who is quite the performer, and I would love to hear him speak at all times. So the committee reviewed, I'm sorry, the committee was met on November 10th and received a comprehensive presentation from Supervisor of Science and Technology Education, Tom Patterson, on the K-12 science and technology education curriculum. The presentation highlighted the district's overarching philosophy of fostering curiosity, hands-on learning, and the development of inquiry-based skills, as well as curriculum updates at the elementary, intermediate, and high school levels, including ongoing alignment with EduPlanet UBD frameworks, continued emphasis on open SIAD instructional practices, and expansion of tech ed course offerings and facilities to support 21st century learning and student accessibility. It was really an amazing presentation. The committee was also provided with updates on district professional development initiatives. On October 13th, the district held a full-day professional development program that included data teams, training for counselors, and CST on fostering resilience, training followed by an afternoon AI ed camp designed to support instructional practice and innovation. Additionally, during the November 5th half-day professional development session, staff participated in wellness activities aligned with strategic plan goal number two, which focuses on supporting educator well-being and fostering a healthy school of culture. I was super jealous. There was yoga. There was woodworking. It was amazing. Further updates were shared regarding the redesign of intervention and referral services, also known as INRS. The committee reviewed the ongoing work to enhance the INRS system through clearer referral pathways, increased use of data analysis, and a more structured, multi-tiered approach to student support. This redesign work is also connected to the district's MTSS alignment efforts. The committee received an update on the district's professional development initiative aligned to strategic plan goal number three, inclusion. This initiative focuses on developing school-based inclusion teams and providing professional learning centered on least restrictive environment, LRA, expectations, and high-leverage instructional practices that support inclusive classrooms. Finally, five overnight trips were approved and are on the agenda tonight for approval. The next SIP committee meeting will be December 8th.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We'll next move to finance and facilities report. That'll be Brendan.
So finance and facilities met on Friday morning. Talked obviously at length about the referendum, but we just covered that, so I'm not going to do it again. Health benefits are lower, for October, were lower than September. Did raise the alarm bells there. So we're doing better, but we're still projected to be about $1 million year-over-year. We'll be able to close the '25-'26 budget in January. I think that's supposed to be '24-'25.
That's just saying that we're going to start slowing the purchases down.
Back with healthcare, we are having our broker shop our plan around, between Horizon and all the other carriers statewide. We are looking at the state health benefits plan and the New Jersey educators' plan, which are $70,000 a year for family coverage. So we can't imagine we're going there, but that's what the state plan is this year. We're averaging about $41,000 right now as a self-insured entity. Out of the '26-'27 budget, health insurance obviously is going to be what we're building the budget around. We're in negotiations with paraprofessionals and about to start custodians. We're preparing for kindergarten, whether that's building curriculum or planning out staffing needs for the '28-'29 school year. We also have more issues with the soil at Lincoln and now Kayler. This has been a problem going on for about eight years. Every time we think we're done, the state comes back two years later and says, try again. So there's a transfer out of maintenance reserve tonight for $130,000 for more soil testing remediation. But on the flip side of that, we are doing something I've never seen, which is we're getting a refund from a contractor on a project for $42,000.
It's not a refund, it's just a change order down, so we issued, yeah.
Either way, it's less, we're spending less on something than we thought we would have.
Yep.
So that doesn't happen in public construction too often.
No.
And that's it for the report for tonight. If there's any questions, happy to answer them.
Okay, thanks very much. Next is policies, personnel, and governance. I think so.
The policy, personnel, and governance committee met virtually on November 13th from 4:00 to 5:30 p.m. Board members Mary Wickens, myself, Rob Bonaccio, and Leila Morelli were in attendance, along with Dr. Gonzalez and Dr. Greer. with Dr. Gonzalez and Dr. Greer. The committee began with a review of stipend job descriptions. As part of the district's ongoing effort to ensure that every paid position is supported by an up-to-date or newly-developed job description, Dr. Greer presented the first set of descriptions for positions that receive stipends. After careful review, the committee recommends that this first batch of stipend positions be included on the November 18th board agenda for approval. Next, the committee reviewed a proposed standard operating procedure related to the review of professional services. The committee supports this SOP as well as the introduction of a consistent review cycle. We are recommending the district establish a five-year review cycle for all professional services, which would also be reflected in policy where appropriate. The administration will draft a schedule aligned with current RFP timelines and bring it forward to the Finance and Facilities Committee for a final review. The committee also continued its work on the development of board goals. Following the NJSBA training in August, board members were invited to submit suggestions for new board goals. In October, the committee recommended consulting with our NJSBA field rep to review and refine those suggestions. Based on that input, four draft goals are being presented to the full board under Unfinished Business this evening. Our hope is to reach consensus on these goals tonight with a formal vote to adopt them anticipated at the December meeting. And finally, on a festive note, the committee encourages all board members to wear their finest ugly sweaters for the December meeting. We look forward to closing up the calendar year in the spirit of joy. Our next meeting is scheduled for December 4th.
Challenge accepted. All right. Next, we'll move to Recognize the Public. This will be on Agenda Action Items Only. During this portion of the meeting, district residents and staff are invited to address the Board of Education on Agenda Action Items Only. These are the color-coded items that are listed at numbers 10 to 14 on the board agenda. If you have public comment not related to an agenda item, we're going to have a second public comment session after the votes where you can present more general, non-agenda items to the board, so just hold on depending upon what you have to talk about. As a courtesy, allow students and staff of Westfield Public Schools to speak first. The board requests that individuals sign in and state their name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation if applicable. For the record, the specific action item you're commenting on, and asks that all remarks be directed to the board president or designated, not to individual members or staff. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding personnel matters are discouraged and cannot be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility, nor will it be liable for any comments made by members of the public. If a matter concerning a district staff member is of interest or concerned to a resident, the matter should be referred to the responsible building principal, superintendent of schools, or the Board of Education either by telephone, letter, or email. Although the board may not respond to items raised during the public forum, all public comments will be considered. Please note that if any member of the public becomes disruptive during the meeting, the board president may terminate the participant's statement. Continued disruptions may result in removal from the meeting or adjournment of the meeting. Each speaker's statement will be limited to three minutes in duration. We'll close on Agenda Items then and get to some board business. I'll begin by making a motion to approve the October 14th, 2025 regular board meeting minutes. Do I have a second? Kristen? We can do that by voice vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Julie, abstention. Okay, I got you. Next, move for the Governance Items. Kristen?
I'd like to move Items A through C under Governance of Tonight's Agenda. Can I get a second? Mary? You're welcome. Okay. We give up.
Rob Bonaccio?
Yes.
Kent Diamond?
Yes.
Brendan Galligan?
Yes.
Charles Jelineus? Leila Morelli?
Yes.
Sonal Patel?
Yes.
Kristin Sonic Schmelz?
Yes.
Julie Steinberg?
No on A, yes to all others.
Mary Wickens?
Yes.
All right, next we'll go to the Personnel Items. I think, Mary?
I'd like to move Items A to you under the Personnel section of Tonight's Agenda. Any comments, questions?
Second, and then I'd like to comment on R.
On R?
Yes.
Okay.
Just want to, so Item R is the contract for the 25th through June 30th of 2030 with our Secretaries Association. I just want to thank their team for all the hard work they did to help get us across the finish line. Thank you, Judy. I don't, I see you, I don't see anybody else from where I'm sitting. Oh, Glenn, thank you for coming as well. It was a pleasure working with you guys, we're glad we got that done, and it will be in a way that I think we're all pretty happy with the end result.
Thank you, Brendan.
I also have some retirement comments. So, this evening, we will be recognizing three individuals who have serviced our school district in a variety of capacities, beginning with Kristy Hoteling. She's been a dedicated science teacher in the Westfield Public School since September 1995, spending her career igniting a love of science and building classroom rooted in curiosity, confidence, and connection. Known for her energy, expertise, and innovation, Kristy brought a real-world relevance to her teaching through a longstanding partnership with Princeton University and her participation in a NASA-funded climate science program. She inspired future educators as a mentor and a cooperating teacher, and continually refined her lessons to keep students, to help students see the beauty and wonder of the world around them. Her classroom is a place where students feel valued, encouraged, and encouraged to ask big questions. Kristy's presence, professionalism, and passion for teaching have left a lasting mark on our schools, and she will be greatly missed by colleagues and students alike. Up next, we have Dammy Panasis. Dammy has been a dedicated paraprofessional in the Westfield School District since 2013, bringing warmth, reliability, and a steady presence to the classroom each and every day. She built strong, caring relationships with students who's always willing to offer a helping hand. Dammy embraced new learning, responded thoughtfully to feedback, and applied strategies with consistency and care. Her adaptability, kindness, and quiet dedication enriched the lives of students and staff alike. She leaves with great appreciation of those who had the pleasure, oh, deep appreciation of those who had the pleasure of working alongside of her. Last but not least, we have Carolyn Maluski. Carolyn joined the Franklin School community just six months ago, but in that short time, she had a meaningful impact through her professionalism, care, and steady presence. As a paraprofessional, she supported her students with patience and compassion. Carolyn worked collaboratively with staff and always brought a thoughtful and student-centered approach to her role. We wish our retirees all the best as they embark on this new journey.
Ready?
I think with that, we're ready.
Rob Bonaccio?
Yes.
Kent Diamond?
Yes.
Brendan Galligan?
Yes.
Charles Jelineus? Leila Morelli?
Yes.
Sonal Patel?
Yes.
Kristin Sonic Schmelz?
Yes.
Julie Steinberg?
Yes.
Mary Wickens?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And with those things official, I'd like to join Brendan congratulating our negotiating team, both all the way around for the, for our new contract with the secretaries, their representatives as well. So, thank you both very much. And please extend the best to the team as well. Next, we'll move to Finance and Facilities. Kent?
Thank you. I'd like to move Items A through N on the agenda tonight. May I have a second? Thank you, Mary. I'd like to call out Item J. We have over $11,000 worth of donations tonight, starting with Stephanie Rubenstein. Thank you for donating a Khan Ambassador Trombone, estimated value of $100, plus a G Proofer BP Clarinet, estimated value of $50. This is to support the Tamakwas Band Program, so thank you, Stephanie. Next up, we have Richard Eisenberg, who donated $8,100 worth of items for the WPS Music Program. I'll highlight the items here. They're the Khan Otto Saxophone, model 24M, estimated value of $500. The Bach Sommer Silver Intermediate BP Trumpet, model Omega 551253, estimated value of $700. A violin, which is a copy of Estrati Varis, estimated value of $200. A violin, which is a copy of Estrati Varis, made by T.B. Abertling Jr. in 1915, with an estimated value of $6,000. Next, we have an electric guitar, Ibanez RG120 Series, 0201778, estimated value of $400. And last, we have a mandolin, Framus Brand, estimated value of $300. Thank you, Richard, for your kind donations there. Next, we have the Wilson PTO, generous donation of $502 to purchase an indoor American flag and pole withstand for the gymnasium stage at Wilson. Next is Westfield United Fund donating $1,475.73 to purchase a Buddy Bench with plaque for the Wilson Playground. Next is the Westfield Rotary Club Foundation, Inc., donating $500 for a grant for Jefferson Early Act Community Program, followed by the, another one by the Westfield Rotary Club Foundation of $500 for a grant for the Roosevelt Early Act Community Program. With these donations tonight, our school year-to-date total is now $134,369.17. Thank you all.
Very nice.
Any questions?
We need to get a drum roll type of sound. Rob Bonaccio?
For the total, for the total.
Ready to roll?
Rob Bonaccio?
Yes.
Kent Diamond?
Yes.
Brendan Galligan?
Yes.
Charles Jelineus? Leila Morelli?
Yes.
Sonal Patel?
Yes.
Kristin Sonic Schmelz?
Yes.
Julie Steinberg?
Yes.
Mary Wickens?
Yes.
All right, thanks very much. Always good to get the Diamond Donation Report. Almost forgot to introduce it. Next, we'll move to Policies. Sonal?
I'd like to move Item A under the Policy section of Tonight's Agenda, which is a second reading on two mandated policies.
Second.
Thank you. Ready? Rob Bonaccio?
Yes.
Kent Diamond?
Yes.
Brendan Galligan?
Yes.
Charles Jelineus? Leila Morelli? Sonal Patel?
Yes.
Kristin Sonic Schmelz?
Yes.
Julie Steinberg?
Yes.
Mary Wickens?
Yes.
All right, and finally, Curriculum Instruction and Programs. Leila?
I'd like to move Items A and B under the Curriculum Instruction and Programs section of Tonight's Agenda. Do I have a second? Kent?
Questions? Rob Bonaccio?
Yes.
Kent Diamond?
Yes.
Brendan Galligan?
Yes.
Charles Jelineus? Leila Morelli? Sonal Patel?
Yes.
Kristin Sonic Schmelz?
Yes.
Julie Steinberg?
Yes.
Mary Wickens?
Yes.
Okay, I will call the board's attention to the notes for the record, and we'll move now to the discussion that was highlighted under Unfinished Business, excuse me, of the board goals. The board goals were included in our Agenda Highlights and in the check-in. I'll just summarize them for the public very quickly, and then we can, you know, we can start a discussion there. As noted by Sonal, these goals were the culmination of polling of the board, of, they grew from the presentation by our NJSBA representative, and they've been distilled down to these four that will be things that we'll be striving for over the course of this year and the future. So, Board Goal One is to review and strengthen the board governance protocols. That will include a review of our handbook and some of our operating procedures. We received a few comments on ensuring those were tightened up. Board Goal Two is to increase the board and committee use of data. That includes, it seems somewhat generic, but it includes instruction on how best to utilize that data, what data is available to and otherwise not for board members, and how best to utilize the data that we're receiving from our district representatives and professionals to set forth policy and planning goals for our future, as well as to collaborate with our district representatives, utilizing this data for, you know, for improvements in policy, curriculum, and facilities and finance. Board Goal Number Three is to build board capacity around HIV oversight responsibilities. The board discusses, you know, HIV matters are discussed typically in executive session because they involve confidential matters. However, the board does have oversight not just over hearings and appeals, but also processes and procedures that our staff and district utilize for processing these. There have been a number of questions that have come up among the board and board members about how we can ensure that those policies remain compliant with what the state requires and improve upon them to help both the public, you know, students and staff involved in them, and obviously the board itself, to maintain its responsibilities. So, a goal there to build our capacity and improve structures there. And then finally, engage in ongoing board development and activities towards certification. This is probably the one we got the most positive commentary toward. Our NJSBA representatives certainly highlighted this as an extreme positive for the board. What board certification is, is essentially, for the public, ensuring that the board and its members have, you know, a proper level of training and operational excellence to make sure that in performing our duties, we're serving the district as best as we can. So, those are the distillations of the board goals. Obviously, you know, they would be fleshed out into greater specifics as we, as we talk about them, but I wanted to highlight those from, you know, from what was submitted and then open the floor to any discussion on those. Again, with the idea being, get some commentary out, put the rest, add that commentary to any final comments we have, and set the goals up for a vote formally in December.
So, when we submitted our goals, each one required us to provide a summary of the goal, how each would benefit the goal in the district, and suggested activities. And, you know, we obviously have like just four summary sentences, so it's, it's much more high-level than, than what was submitted. So, it's hard to kind of understand what each goal is in that, in that context. How are we going to be able to vote? Are we going to have that level of detail before we vote? I guess is kind of what I'm trying to understand, because, you know, I feel like it's, I understand why you had to distill, but I'm trying to understand, you know, at a high level, what the detail is behind each goal, because it seems like there was detail, it was distilled, and now that detail needs to be returned in order to understand what, 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 what the approach is for each one of those goals. So, I was just wondering how that's going to happen and, or if it is going to happen.
Okay, so, I just wanted to make sure stuff was there. So, some of the detail you're looking for is in the committee notes from PPG. That breaks down some of the goal, some of the activities with the goals. In some cases, some of the stuff that we got was, was very, very specific, so we ran that by our NJSBA rep to make sure that we were treading the waters correctly between what's within our responsibilities and versus what's within our administrative responsibilities. So, she was able to flush that out for us in a bit greater detail, but I would suggest checking the PPG notes for some of those more, a little bit more expansive stuff, and then if there's further questions on that, we can, we can get into a little bit more detail on that.
Oh, no, no, I did look, I meant that each goal, like, is at high level says that, but like it doesn't explain like what we're going to do for each goal. That's what, like, when we, when we, when we put the form in, like, there's three sections for each, I'm sorry if it wasn't clear. So, I'm just trying, I'm wondering how we're going to get back to that so it's very clear, like how each one, I'm sorry if that wasn't clear in what I was asking.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, I probably misunderstood. You're looking at what the action plan for each goal is, right?
Yeah, so I understand, like, how, like, you know, because like you tried to take it, you distilled it, you tried to get there, but now, like, how do we know, like, what each goal means, because it's very high-level now?
Right.
How are we going to know, so when we're voting for it, like, that goal is at the level that the goals, in terms of what the original structure was at, if, if at all?
Yes. No, I think we'll have, you know, certainly a certain level of that, but I think the action plans are going to get flushed out over the course of, over the course of future discussion, so I don't know that we'll have a very specific bullet point by bullet point action plan to vote on in December, but we'll certainly have the general goals that break it down, and then that action plan would get developed either through committee, wherever the goals would fall, you know, or through further comment.
Can I add on to that, Rob? What, what we're going to be putting on in December will be these, these goals, as these are the goals we want to approve, and then from there, we would be able to develop the action plan and the detail around it, what you're talking about, once we approve them.
Well, who's, just so I understand, who's "we"? Because when we talk about these goals, these are board goals, right? So, is it like a committee of the whole kind of an effort, or is this going to be just the PPG making these decisions, and then it comes back to us to vote on at a high level?
So, if you look at the PPG meeting agenda form, there is the goal. Like, for example, Board Goal One, Review Like, for example, Board Goal One, review and strengthen board governance protocols. And then there's a sample activity, right? And says, "The board will review the Board of Education Handbook and Governance Practices to ensure alignment with current bylaws, statutes, and best practices in New Jersey Public School Governance. Revisions will be made as necessary to clarify committee roles, communication protocols, decision-making processes, and expectations for member conduct with the goal of improving board efficiency, transparency, and collaboration," right? So there's the goal, there are some sample activities, and then there is, at the bottom, this link to an action plan template and sample. Did you see all that?
I did.
Okay. So what we're going to do is, we're going to fill it out in PPG, and then it is provided to everybody, and it can be worked on collaboratively via comment, via email, just as we, just as it is posted. And then we'll be doing it together at the table as we discuss it in unfinished business. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
I think so, yes. No, I think the action plan on that form would get worked, once the goals are approved, and we know what we, that these are the goals we want to work with, we start with the action plan and get PPG, and then those would obviously, yes, come back to the board for formal approval for other plans.
And it's posted as well. It's posted as well, I'm saying, and then before the board meeting, you can email the committee and go back and forth with your input, as is outlined in the handbook.
Right. So this is basically step one. Get the goals and the general, in the general concepts on the board, and then the action plan gets developed, comes back before the board to make sure that we're hitting all the correct points.
So it's not going to be like a separate committee of the whole? It's going to be PPG driving this?
Correct. Yeah.
And that decision was made by you and Dr. Gonzalez, just so I understand the process? Or that was something that was recommended by the state?
Best practice.
That's just best practice.
Correct. Yeah, that's best practice from the state and the rest.
From the state?
Yes, correct. Yeah, no, we don't, we don't get to just make up stuff.
I just didn't know. I just didn't know how the process worked. That's why I'm asking. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. So what we'll do then is, we will, if there's any of the people, let's add in, if there's any other thought, I mean, I know we're kind of on the spot here. So if there's any other thoughts that come up, you know, over the course of the next, you know, week or so before the next PPG meeting, please definitely send them to the PPG chairs, so that we can flush some of these things out in a little bit greater detail. Any other comments? Because we'll start with the goals and some of their beginnings in December. All right. There's no new business submitted to the agenda beforehand, so let's move to liaison reports. Who's got them? Kristin?
I have two. First is for the PTC. On October 15th, the PTC held its monthly meeting virtually. Mrs. Basileon provided an overview of the district's counseling programming and reviewed the HIB process. And then this, the different committees also gave reports, some highlights from those committee reports. The PTC is continuing to fundraise for the PTC Scholarship and the Cuthbertson Scholarship in hopes to raise $10,000 by the end of 2025 to support both of these scholarships. The Special Education Committee hosted its Fall Roundtable on October 16th about the legals, legal in-and-outs of IEPs and 504s, and they are also hosting a parent social on November 20th, this Thursday, at 7:00 PM at Charlie Brown's. And then the Breaks Committee thanked everyone for participating in the successful Walk-In Bike to School Day. The next PTC meeting is actually tomorrow. It will be held virtually, and we will be presenting a similar progress update as we did this evening. I also attended the Washington General PTO meeting last Thursday. I was in attendance with Dr. Perry and several parents. Dr. Perry provided updates on Washington School and answered several questions regarding the upcoming construction. At the conclusion of the meeting, Teresa Wright, who is also a parent at Washington, shared updates on the community Wait Till 8th pledge. They currently have over 400 pledges from families throughout Westfield, ranging from kindergarten to sixth grade. And if you'd like to learn more, you can email Teresa at waituntil8th, but I guess I should spell that out, because it's the word "wait," then the word "until," and then "8t-h," dot westfield@gmail.com. And that's the update.
Julie?
I have a UCESC update. I was able to do the school tours of the six schools, and I highly recommend everybody on the board, as well as the public, if they want them, do that. Four of the six schools reside here in Westfield's borders, and these are excellent special education facilities that are available to the county and provide very strong out-of-district options for children with special needs. Whether it's the Westlake School, which is empowering students with multiple disabilities, Crossroads, which is an autism program which starts in preschool, Lambert's Mill, which is really catering to behavioral challenges and emotional challenges, so the ERI population, it was a very impressive and very compassionate program, which is not always easy to find. Both Hillcrest Academies, which will be merged as the facilities merge as the completion of the Cardinal Drive building moves forward, but it was still very impressive to see. And as I mentioned to my colleagues earlier, in many ways, what they're doing over there is creating a small alternative environment that reminds me a lot of what we're doing here in our own district with Project 79. And of course, the Work Readiness Academy, which is kind of a hidden gem and provides a transition program for students 18 to 21 who are looking for real-life opportunities and a program to help learn life skills, work skills, once they're leaving and getting ready to transition into the real world. I actually had a chance to tour that today. So I just wanted to recommend that to everybody. If you have a chance to, they will still create custom tours for anybody who wants to do that, and the information is available on Instagram as well as their website, so I just wanted to make sure that we share that and encourage everyone to participate. Thank you.
Any other reports? I would actually echo what Julie said. I've had the opportunity to tour a few of those buildings myself when I was part of the board's foundation, and it is incredible, absolutely incredible, the work that they're doing. And we can talk about it, but, you know, as Julie's suggesting, seeing is a whole lot different than hearing. So thank you for bringing that up. Okay. We'll now move to recognize public for general comments. During this portion of the meeting, members of the public are invited to address the Board of Education on any topic. As a courtesy, allow current students and staff of Westfield Public Schools to speak first. The board requests that individuals sign in and state their name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation, if applicable, for the record, and asks that all remarks be directed to the board president or designee, not to individual board members or staff. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding personnel matters are discouraged and cannot be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility, nor will it be liable, for any comments made by members of the public. If a matter concerning a district staff member is of interest or concern to a resident, the matter should be referred to the responsible building principal, superintendent of schools, or the Board of Education, either by telephone, letter, or email. Although the board may not respond to items raised during the public forum, all public comments will be considered. Please note that if any member of the public becomes disruptive during the meeting, the board president may terminate the participant's statement. Continued disruptions may result in removal from the meeting or adjournment of the meeting. Each speaker's statement will be limited to three minutes and during. All set?
Yeah.
Excellent. Go for it.
Hi, my name's Audrina Kohl. I'm currently a senior at Westwood High School, and I'm here tonight to speak on the behalf of many members of my senior class regarding our policy. We hope the board will reconsider the restriction on leaving campus during our flex periods, which previously last year were called free periods. In previous years, seniors had the privilege to leave campus during lunch or any free period. Under our old schedule, which ran from periods one through nine, and seniors in upperclassmen in general were allowed to leave from periods four through nine if you had a lunch in a free period. It worked very smoothly and responsibly, but with the change to the block scheduling this year, that freedom was kind of taken away from us. Now, even during the flex period, which is technically a free period, seniors are required to stay in the buildings, specifically this cafeteria and cafe. And I, so I started a petition, which asks seniors to be allowed to leave during flex periods, and I currently have over 300 signatures from the senior class, which is more than half of our senior class, and the number continues to grow. And this isn't just a small group of students asking, it's majority of our entire senior class asking for this privilege. And senior is kind of supposed to prepare us for life after high school, which is whether it's trade, college, work, whatever the case may be. It's supposed to, Westwood's supposed to prepare us to go out into the real world, so I feel like restricting us to a building during our flex period, that's not very, that's not preparing us that well for our college life ahead of us. I feel like trust and independence are a big part of this preparation. I feel like if we're trusted to drive, vote, and hold jobs, we should also be trusted to manage our own time responsibly. And for many students, flex periods are a time to recharge or catch up, but during lunch periods, teachers often hold office hours and labs, which a lot of students have either a double lab, so they have two labs in one day, or, and they don't have time to eat and really recharge and refocus, so they're actually engaged in school, and that's when mental health starts to become like a big deal and like stressing and everything like that. And so, oh, sorry. And some students also, um, sorry. And some students also need time to, like, fuel up and, like, take a break. So I feel like allowing seniors to leave during flex would give us time to, like, grab the food, fuel up, come back, and be more focused and ready to learn. And I also feel like this change wouldn't create any new problems, because this would be exactly kind of what we had last year, and we already have a privilege to sign in and out for open lunch, upperclassmen do. So I feel like we could use the same system that we use for open lunch, like, on Genesis, where they ask the parents, oh, is the child allowed to leave for open lunch? We could do the same restrictions. Is your child allowed to leave for flex periods as well? I feel like that shouldn't be a problem. And I also believe that Westfield's motto is "for the students, by the students," which kind of instills that you guys hold trust within us, and I feel like this kind of took away from the trust that they had with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, do I just go? All right. Hi, my name is Alice Schaefer. I'm also a senior at Westwood High School, and I'm here to also speak for the many concerned students that are really, they're facing consequences for this change that has been made. Specifically, something that Audrina didn't touch on, there's a lot of detentions that have been happening, because you have to scan in exactly at the right moment when your flex period starts, but that gets really messy, because there's hundreds of students coming in here, and so things happen in the, like, Genesis system, and then you get a cut, even though you were here. And that was just not an issue that we were having before. And additionally, clearly, like, we have this system in place. We've done it before, and there's no reason why we can't do it again. I'm just confused what tangible difference it makes in me leaving the school at 11:00 versus at 1:00. I'm still leaving campus, so I'm just confused why, like, the time on the clock matters, because I'm doing the same thing, and I think a lot of my peers are feeling the same way. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no other public comment, I will close that portion of the public comment, and I will make a motion to adjourn our meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll take Kent. We'll do that by a voice vote. All in favor? Huh? Any opposed? Any abstentions? We are adjourned.